I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting of September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tony Bernay, councillor and chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. I would like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of emergency, please evacuate the council chambers to the nearest exit, through the chamber doors, and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see our deputy clerk. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in front of the parking lot outside of Town Hall. Also, please ensure you place your cellphones on silent or turn off. And lastly, the Town of Lincoln commit council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Roll call. All members of council are in attendance tonight, in person or remotely, with regrets from councillor Russell. We also have staff attending to speak to their IRA of expertise in person and remotely. Additionally, we have Mary Ann Love, M.L. Consulting, joining us remotely. Declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest this evening? Councillor Reimer.
Thank you, Chair Bernay. I'll be declaring interest in item seven point two point one, Niagara Benchlands Development Fund Allocation. Two of the recipients of this fund are customers of the company that I work for.
Thank you, councillor. In addition, I will also be declaring a conflict on the same item, on seven point two point one, as a family member of ours is also an employee of one of the applications discussed in that report. Confirmation of agenda. Do members have any amendments to the order of the agenda? Seeing none. Statutory public meetings? There are no statutory public meetings this evening. Consent agenda? We have no consent items. So we'll jump right into the planning and economic development portion of the agenda. Delegations? There are none. Reports? We are now considering report A.D. fourteen dash twenty-two regarding the Niagara Benchlands Destination Development Fund Application Fund Allocation. At this point, I will ask the councillor and vice-chair Michelak assume the chair role as I will be removing myself from the following item due to a declaration of interest.
Councillor Bernay and councillor Reimer will refrain from voting on the following items due to their declarations of interest. Our tourism coordinator, Brittany Bazalousky, will provide some opening remarks. Where's Brittany?
Thank you, Chair Micklick.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Easton and fellow town councillors. On behalf of our local tourism-based businesses, I would like to thank you for your continued and ongoing support, as well as your championship of our local sector. Your support this year and throughout the pandemic has not gone unnoticed, and your approval of the new Niagara Destinations Development Fund is just one of those initiatives that shows your continued support. With your support this year, Town Staff was actually able to implement this new tourism recovery initiative with our local tourism-based businesses as a catalyst to support their hurried economic recovery, as well as strategic growth for the new Niagara Benchlands Destination identity, following the detrimental effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. By supporting our local tourism-based businesses with financial aid, we were able to encourage and foster greater collaboration and innovation amongst our private sector businesses. The Niagara Benchlands Destination Development Fund is truly the catalyst required to support these new and expansion-driven projects in both the short and long term by encouraging this local business community and our local tourism operators to work together to foster innovative, capacity-building tourism products, events, festivals, that all have a measurable impact on Lincoln's tourism economy. As noted as a strategic priority within our tourism strategy and action plan, tourism-based businesses and events, their activations and their experiential offerings is what helps draw visitors to our community, encouraging these visitors to engage with our local business operators, creating opportunities for economic growth and for our team even greater future economic investment into Lincoln's tourism sector. This year for the 2022 inaugural fund, Town Staff actually received a total of nine applications, seven of which were assessed as being eligible and were evaluated by our evaluation committee. Our goal this year in the inaugural fund was to try to support as many local applicants as we possibly could. While multiple projects satiated all the program criteria and eligibility, applications that showed that greatest amount of sector collaboration, as well as the greatest alignment with our new grant policy, these will be the recommendations you see coming forward to this evening for you, as from our evaluation committee, as the projects that show the greatest amount of merit, as well as the greatest amount of impact potentially for our tourism economy. Tonight, the report before you highlights this committee's recommendations for the 2022 fund allocation. Tonight, Staff actually recommends that council support and disperse the total of the 2022 fund allocation, which you will remember in 2021 was approved at a $25,000 allocation from the tourism operating budget. This year, Staff recommends the following by way of project, business organization, and dispersment for this year's fund. Bench Brewing Company, for their Harvest Festival, we're recommending an $8,500 award. Creekside Estate Winery, their Holiday Market offering, we are recommending a $3,000 award to that group. Creekside Estate Winery, on behalf of the new wineries of Niagara Benchlands as the lead applicant, we're recommending $8,400 to be awarded for their new Holiday Benchland Safari. One of our local B&amp;Bs and great champions of our tourism sector, House by the Side of the Road Bed and Breakfast, we're recommending a $2,100 award for their brand-new visitor guide launch. Local ecotour operator Niagara Nature Tours, we're recommending that that company receive $1,000 in an award to host brand-new garden tours here in our destination. And then last but finally not least, the restaurant at Pearl Morissette for their really innovative Edgar tours in their garden with their horticultural list. Tonight, by approving this recommendation, Town Staff can truly help leverage the Niagara Benchlands new destinations' unique attributes in an effort to increase visitation and visitor spending, as well as setting Lincoln's new tourism sector on a trajectory for growth, competitive post-pandemic recovery, and additional investment attraction, job creation, and continued economic prosperity. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions about the report or the project that council or mayor Easton may have.
Thank you very much, Brittany. Do members of council have any questions? I see councillor Timmers.
Thank you, Chair Micklick. Through you to Ms. Bazalousky. I think this is fantastic. You know, I think it's going to bring some really new and exciting, out-there, you know, creative ideas for people who want to apply for this kind of fund, and I think it's great. Like, when you read the descriptions of what was applied for, like, very, very exciting event, so I'm really excited to see this. I did see that Creekside had two applications. So I know you had an evaluation committee, and I'm totally happy with the whole structure and how you determine, you know, where the funds go. Was there anything that limits them from applying for more than one, or no?
No. So through you, Chair Micklick, through councillor Timmers, there was no metric of number of applications that any organization could submit. We were really truly looking for viable projects. We had some great purveyors like Creekside, who had multiple innovative ideas for collaboration that satiated all that program eligibility, and we didn't want to discredit or discount those in the evaluation committee's adjudication process, because you never know, we might have something of even greater merit coming from a single company that has sometimes greater resources available to help support these projects than some of our smaller business owners. So by allowing multiple projects from the same organization, we ensured that that diversity and collaboration and number of applications with viable projects came forward to the evaluation committee without any of those barriers for adjudication.
No, that's great. I'm really excited about this, and there definitely is a mix here on different sizes of businesses that have applied and were successful. So I could see this becoming really a positive moving forward, so thank you, Chair Micklick. Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Pachariva.
Thank you, Chair Micklick. Thank you, Brittany, for the report. Just a couple of questions. Being, having an intimate knowledge of winery passports and events, so the one, the Holiday Safari, so holiday-themed passport, how many wineries are participating in that?
Through you, Chair Micklick, through councillor Pachariva, at this time, the number of included applicants is still in the air. They have dictated in their application, councillor, that there is a minimum of ten. Right now, that organization is still trying to form their not-for-profit status, hence why the lead applicant right now is Creekside Estate Winery on that file. With that, they are still collaborating or collecting membership, so as we were releasing the fund, their team is also still continuing to do their due diligence. Right now, we're looking at a minimum of ten different purveyors with inside that footprint, but I'm happy to follow up with council once the application finally comes through, through all of their membership base.
Okay, and can I go down that same line of questioning, Chair?
Sure.
Couple more with that. So how many, so we've got ten wineries involved, and it says over an extended holiday-winter period, so are we looking a month, or?
Yes. So through you councillor Micklick, to councillor Pachariva, the duration of their program right now is satiated at thirty days. When we go to do our diligence back with the group, we'll be looking for them to finalize and make those concrete. We would love to see a bit of an extension, councillor, as you can only imagine, through to Cyber Monday and that Black Friday holiday period, but those are things our team can influence and using our expertise as well in bringing these projects to the table.
Okay, so if I may, so is this going to, is this going to take the place of Wrapped Up in the Valley, or is this something completely different?
Through you, Chair Micklick, through councillor Pachariva. Unfortunately, as you know, with the DMO not functioning at this time, none of those traditional offerings are in play. Our local stakeholders also are aware, councillor, that that product proposition previously is difficult to deliver post-pandemic with some of the safety that we have, as well as it's not a viable option for all of our passport members. This is creating a more elevated experience for that consumer base, and by using more boutique experiences, offering a higher value, although we, you know, it's not that, again, we're always about yield over those numbers in our strategic planning, this is not, this will be a little bit different by way of delivery, and this is a brand-new program, so talking about historicals or expectations of guests, right now, we're just based on a formulae that the group has provided us, based on their marketing efforts and the strategic plan to roll this out.
Okay, and Chair Micklick, two more on this same, because, yeah.
This is something that you enjoy and appreciate.
This is something, yes, I did with my eyes closed, so, yeah, so just trying to flush.
I'll allow you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, worship. So, I mean, I think this is great. Any, do we have access to the old databases? So, you know, upwards of probably 5,000 people, so mail out, email out, blast out to them and say, hey, this is new and improved and, you know, elevated, and we're going to attack it that way?
Through you, Chair Micklick, over to councillor Pachariva, you and I are speaking the same language. One of the great reasons for the town not only championing this, but being the implementer behind it, is we also bring that expertise and our leverage of audience to these projects. So we do have access to the 20 Valley Tourism Association's previous mailing list, and we've been very diligent in making sure that we're continuing to engage these audiences as we're going through that DMO development. The other great tool that we have at our disposal is the new Niagara Benchlands website, which our team is actually looking to launch at the end of this month. Far more robust trip itinerary, travel builder, will have a full events calendar. All of the projects you see coming forward will have the benefit of having our communications team, our creative services team, our team's acumen in tourism, Paul's acumen in economic development, all coming to the table to ensure the projects that we've put forward are a success to the best of our ability, using all the resources we have at our disposal to help support these projects.
Okay, and is there, is there, and going to be, because one of the themes is we want them to come, we want them to stay longer, we want them to spend more. So partnering with the B&amp;Bs that are doing this own event to stay over, whether it's a winter licious as part of it, so on a Saturday night, if you're staying over, there's themed meals at some of the wineries that are participating, you're going down that road as well?
Through you, Chair Micklick, to councillor Pachariva, although we're not dictating specific business tactics for collaboration within these projects, one of the reasons we encouraged and fostered collaboration is exactly for that. We want to turn day trip itineraries into overnight stays, and by doing and folding in other partners, for instance, like our in-partners and B&amp;B partners, is where we create that longevity in these programs. So with our team's support and our connectivity to other local partners, like great partners like House by the Side of the Road, our great boutique and hotelier operators, we'll be able to help encourage greater participation outside of what they've dictated within their project scope, to help encourage those overnights, also by creating those links on our Niagara Benchlands website, to make folks have the ability to be able to create an overnight itinerary very quickly through a couple click-throughs. We are not the aggregator or the builder of the business, councillor. What we're doing is helping promote and foster those collaborations where there's holes or gaps in areas of opportunity to create that extension programming.
Okay, and last one, if I may. So you said you're fostering the program, so the new website, it'll have an e-commerce platform to be able to convert sales, so if they're coming to the Benchlands, you want to grab them there, you don't want to redirect them, so are they going to have the ability to purchase to come to this event off of that website?
Through you, Chair Micklick, through councillor Pachariva, we will not have a booking engine on our Niagara Benchlands website, but what we will do is ensure that the click-through to ticket sales wherever, if there is a ticket sale component or a registration component for one of our external third-party projects or businesses, is quickly targeted off our Niagara Benchlands website.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's been a while since I've sat in this chair. I'm not sure if I counted five questions there.
We're all having the same vote, Chair. Thank you.
Fair enough, fair enough. Councillor McPherson, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Chair Micklick. So through you to Brittany. Brittany, is this a list of all the applicants in the report? Is that all we got?
Through you, Chair Micklick, to councillor McPherson, we actually received nine eligible projects, seven of which you see here. Unfortunately, two were received from outside the municipality's jurisdiction.
So follow-up to that, your thoughts on nine applying?
Through you, Chair Micklick.
And maybe, maybe just further to that, you know, coming out of a pandemic, you know, where things were very, very tough, you know, I would have thought there would be thirty or forty applicants or fifty applicants to this. Do you think that people just didn't get it, didn't see it? What's your thoughts on it?
Through you, Chair Micklick, to councillor McPherson, we received a lot of phone calls. Our team had a lot of candid conversations with our local stakeholders with regards to the application. Although I know nine doesn't seem like a large number when you think of the breadth and depth of diversity of local tourism businesses that we have here in Lincoln, it was a thirty day window of an opportunity for folks to get involved, so our local stakeholders, to get involved in the application. Unfortunately, due to timing with the fund, we dropped this new initiative in during their high season. So despite the fact that we had great appetite for the fund, we are experiencing some greater challenges within our sector that are dividing, unfortunately, our stakeholders' time, attention, and energy. We have got a great labor shortage right now within our local tourism sector. A lot of providers, general managers, who would be responsible for writing these applications are doing a lot more in their business day-to-day. We tried to remove as many barriers to entry as we possibly could in our application process. It's an extremely quick application to complete. I think the timeframe of when the fund was launched, I think we can do better next year in getting this out earlier in spring, looking to come to council again during budget season this year with a similar ask to continue to help support this fund, and getting it launched in-market in the spring to allow a bit more of a window during a time that's a bit slower for our local stakeholders, to give them as much opportunity as they possibly can to get involved. We are not by any means underwhelmed by what we received. Again, to councillor Timmers' comments, we received really great innovative projects. We would love to see more, and we will do a bit better next year, and trying to work with the ebbs and flows of the seasonality of this sector's business to try to encourage and remove that barrier from the application process.
Okay, fair enough, and if I may, Mr. Chair, just one other question. So seeing in the awards, you know, some, you know, received more than half of their ask, you know, others didn't. Is there strict criteria that the team has that would be justification to those that, you know, may question, why did so-and-so get this and we only got this?
Through you, Chair Micklick, to councillor McPherson, pardon me, we used a standardized evaluation matrix for every single one of our applications, based on a point system. So the evaluation that you see in front of you and the sliding scale meets and matches that point system that was awarded. Again, transparency and equality is what we're looking for inside this fund. Every single one of the applicants who submitted a project will have a full debrief with our team. The adjudication will be transparent as well for them. They'll know where they could have done better, and in fact, our team will help them ensure that they do better in future applications. The way that this has been awarded is based on that evaluation scale. There were some serious projects that had, very comprehensive projects that had come forward and scored better, unfortunately, than other applicants, but again, we will do our best to ensure that those applicants understand where those gaps were and provide them the opportunity to fix those mistakes or remedy those mistakes in the future.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brittany. Thank you. I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much, Brittany. It was a pleasure working with you on this. Many of these questions, we talked offline prior to this meeting, so it's nice to see we're all on the same track with how this is moving forward. I'm looking, you know, I think it's a great idea for next year, who best to know what to organize or, you know, plan than those in the community themselves that are trying to draw new tourism. So thank you very much for this and for taking the questions from members of council. There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Mayor Easton that council receive and file as information report A.D. dash fourteen dash twenty-two regarding the 2022 Niagara Benchlands Destination Development Fund Allocation, and approve the dispersment of $25,000 from the 2022 Niagara Benchlands Destination Development Fund to the six successful applicants as outlined in this report. Now, there was a little bit of movement and activity here prior. We were doing some number counting with regards to quorum. Councillor Ranjima had declared a conflict and did not participate in this discussion and will not vote on this item either, just for clarification as what was going on here with two members already declaring an interest and one not being here. That's what was happening. So I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open.
How do I vote? I'm going to say yes. Ask me verbally. Yes. I vote yes.
That vote now closes and that carries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Moving on, at this time, councillor Bernay and councillor Reimer will rejoin the meeting with councillor Bernay resuming the role as chair for the remainder of the meeting.
There being no additional reports to consider for the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda, we have now concluded the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda. At this time, we will move right into the General Business and Finance Committee agenda. General Business and Finance, item eight point one, delegations. We have no delegations this evening. Reports, eight point two, we will now consider the delegated authority update, L.S. fifteen dash twenty-two, and I will ask our CEO to provide introductory comments. Mr. Krikopoulos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will be providing some opening comments. Our director of Legislative Services and Clerk, Julie, is also here, and I think collectively we're able to answer any questions council may have, as well as parts of our senior leadership team that are also implicated in this report. This isn't the first time we've talked to council about delegated authority, and I would say it probably dates back to 2007, when council first approved and passed a delegated authority bylaw at that particular time. I think as council knows, because we have met with many of you over the last number of weeks, delegated authority is one of those things that's constantly evolving and in a lot of ways constantly changing. A lot of it is driven through legislation and by legislation, and most recently, in August, we were in front of you on a lot of the planning matters that, at that particular time, council supported and passed a delegated authority report. We have given you a little bit of an overview here. There are some items here that pertain to various elements, as I said, that we're going to go through. I do want to highlight a couple of slides or a couple of points in this particular report, because I think they're important, and I think they provide a little bit of There is nothing in any of these delegated authority reports, and I think sometimes when we talk delegated authority, that has people assuming responsibility and things are taken away from one entity and given to another entity. I think it's important to know that a delegated authority of any sort can be revoked by council at any particular point in time, and that this delegated authority that we're looking at does not do anything relative to taxation matters, incorporating corporations, any appointment or removal of statutory officers. The ones we often get questions about when we're talking about delegated authority really are those planning items. So you'll see two places in this report where we say things like zoning bylaws, amending official plans, and those sorts of issues are not things that are subject to this delegated authority bylaw. You'll also see further down on one of the pages, that's again something that's very bolded, because I think anytime we talk about delegated authority, that often comes up. We have tried to take council through a number of what I'll call some flow charts or examples of decision-making processes. As I said, we've met with a number of members of council, those that were able to make those meetings. We've discussed, similarly, had a meeting I did with Mayor Easton, took her through the flow chart and these suggestions. A lot of these are really just a matter of the way we do business and moving particular items forward. The flow charts, again, do speak, I think, contextually to some of the things we want to take council through, and at no point in time, and I hope it's clear both in the report and in these flow charts, to remove the opportunity for engagement or the opportunity for information sharing. One of the key points, I think, that came out of our consultation with members of council is your desire to know, however small, what is happening and what decisions are made. We've talked about a larger biannual report that's shared with council where we go into these things in depth, but we've also talked about through the council information package, the council correspondence package, sharing a lot of the decision-making that happens so that council receives it on a much more frequent basis, and we had a good idea that came out of, again, those conversations in terms of how we lay out our council information packages and make it clear for you to understand. So the report is in front of you. Again, the planning piece, which we dealt with in August, is also highlighted here, but that decision and that approval has already been granted, and we are here in front of you to ask any questions council may have. Again, your senior leadership team can address any of the questions you may have. I won't speak to the elements around organizational responsiveness and why we do these sorts of things. Obviously, we've shared that in the past in terms of why delegated authority reports and delegated authority is both legislative in terms of what is being suggested, but also just a matter of good best practice and good business decision-making. So it is in front of you, Mr. Chair, and we're open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Do members of council have any questions? Counselor Mickelik?
Thank you, Chair Brunet. Through you to our CEO. So I do appreciate those offline conversations that we had with regards to delegated authority, and I know I asked several questions that, you know, were pointed and direct. So, and they were all answered satisfactory. The question I have is with regards to council's ability to revoke delegated authority, explain to me how this would happen, myself or anybody as a counselor suspecting or not sure or worried about having given up this, you know, this approval process or this procedure. What's the process? How does a member of council start that conversation about considering the revocation of some pieces of this?
Would you like me to direct that to the clerk or to...?
So I was just going to start, Mr. Chair, and just highlight that, I mean, there are some very specific, I think, you know, rules that apply within the municipal act that lay out how that occurs, but I think our clerk can take us through the actual detailed approach on how that would happen.
Thank you, Mike. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Great question. Thanks, Counselor. Through the Chair to the Counselor. So there's various parameters that you would do that. So, I mean, first, we would work with you and any other council member to understand what those concerns would be, if you did have any at any time, and hopefully, we could have addressed them. However, if it does come to the point where a council does feel the need that they want to revoke a certain decision-making, that's already been highlighted in one of the bylaws that would go forward, then that would be something that you would put on the table, and then it would basically be like a notice of motion that you would like to put that forward and to revoke that particular decision-making process. So it wouldn't necessarily be asking for the entire delegated authority, but just perhaps maybe if there was one particular item that council would have to revoke that particular item at that time.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I just think it's important for us to know that things can happen quickly and it's not a long, drawn-out process. That's the concern I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to go to Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The delegated authority bylaw serves to define more clearly what is and is not routine operations or actions by professional staff with special expertise, as opposed to elected officials who have a completely different function. And maybe we underestimate what that function, the importance of that function is. It certainly is harder to achieve than it is to deal with operations in terms of our responsibilities. Further, this decision by council demonstrates an advanced understanding of the important responsibility for council to set the direction of the town. And I repeat that, it is our role exclusively to set the direction of the town and for staff to carry out those executive orders which are expressed in bylaws and motioned by a majority vote of council. Now, that is the division, if you want to look at it as one side or the other, but we all know that we work as a team here and that there's a great deal of guidance that comes from our staff around executive orders and the directions that we are wanting to move into on behalf of our community. I'm pleased that we're moving forward on this. It further confirms the separation in the roles, the importance that each of it has in order that Lincoln be governed in a responsive manner and according to the needs of our community. And the best practice standards for council, as has been reinforced by the CEO, should be foremost in our minds. We should be looking at all times, Mr. Chairman, to change our behaviors, to put those checks and balances in place that Counseler Mickelik and others have mentioned. I'm very pleased to support this motion, very pleased that we're finally moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just some clarity on page nine of 15 on the Niagara Escarpment Development Permit Application. And maybe best that, from my purview, as I understand it, a decision made by the Niagara Escarpment Commission is their decision for any lands that are under their jurisdiction. So if the Niagara Escarpment Commission was to change the zoning on a piece of property, I understand it to be their call and that the town is asked to comment. This particular flow chart, maybe I'm not reading this properly, but it says, or it asks the question, does the application conform to the town's official plan? So when looking at it that way, the official plan would have that piece of property zoned agricultural. The Niagara Escarpment Commission has changed it. So would that then come to council? Would it go drop down to that black checkered box to say council needs to approve that through you to Mr. Bruder or to Kathleen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can take that if you like.
Go ahead, Mr. Bruder, please.
Yeah, so through you to Counselor McPherson. So on properties that are within the Niagara Escarpment Commission, really, like, there isn't a kind of a rezoning, per se. The Niagara Escarpment Commission has a development permit system, and you're correct, we're a commenting agency on that. They get a development permit application for, you know, any type of development on lands that are within the Niagara Escarpment Commission, and then we as staff comment on that. And one of the lenses in which we comment are, we look at, how does it conform with our official plan? That's what we utilize. That's our decision-making when we provide the comments for the development permit applications, but it's not about changing zoning or changing any official plan designation or anything like that, because those properties are just simply within the Niagara Escarpment Commission lands. So, you know, there isn't really a zone, per se. It's all just Niagara Escarpment lands. There's a couple of different categories within those, but that doesn't change the way we review development permit applications. So hopefully, that clarifies for you.
So just further than that, Mr. Chair, so just for crystal-clear understanding, so are you saying that the lands would remain zoned agricultural even though the Niagara Escarpment Commission has approved the owner to build on those lands potentially residential?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the Niagara Escarpment Commission, again, they're not zoned agricultural. They're just within the Niagara Escarpment Commission, which means they are subject to a set of policies within the Niagara Escarpment Plan, which the Niagara Escarpment Commission uses to assess any types of development. But for residential purposes other than, you know, same thing as in an agricultural area, building a house, anything else wouldn't be in line, for the most part, with the Niagara Escarpment Plan.
Okay, and so that being the case, then it would come to us as not conforming to our official plan, then it would go to council?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If it didn't conform to the Niagara Escarpment Plan, it probably wouldn't even make it to us for comment, I don't think. The Niagara Escarpment Commission would even let it get to that point, to be honest with you.
I'm not sure I can agree with that. You know, we've seen homes being built on agricultural property in our town, on Niagara Escarpment jurisdiction land. So if the Niagara Escarpment Commission was to, if their board was to say, go ahead, Mr. Builder, you can, you know, we're giving you the okay to build on that property, even though it's agriculturally zoned, it's happened. We've seen it. So I'm hearing that the Niagara Escarpment Commission would not do that, would not approve a development on a piece of agriculturally zoned land in our municipality.
Through you, Mr. Chair. They would allow perhaps maybe a house to be built on the property, but when you talk about residential development, like something like a subdivision or condominium, no, that's not in line with the policies.
Okay, and just to be clear and to get back to this flow chart, so let's say that happened, that they did say okay. That would come to this council. Is that true?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would think it would, yes.
In the checkered black box that's on this flow chart. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, can you...? Thank you. Counselor Mickelik?
Thank you. Thank you very much for a second opportunity to speak. You sure? Okay, thank you. So dovetailing on Counselor McPherson's comments, so I'm all about hypothetical-speaking situations. So there's a plot of land that is currently within NEC. There's advocacy from the developer for a possible MZO order, ministerial zoning order. They lobby the government of the day to try to invoke that. Where does council play in that scenario where the member, you know, the government of the day, would they have to consult with council to see what our thoughts are, or would they consult with Planning Department, what their thoughts are and opinions? How would we be, where would we be in that situation or scenario? Through you, Counselor Brunet.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think in that case, yeah, I think the local council would be consulted on such an event like that. As a matter of fact, I think in some cases, they might rely on the input of council to drive something like that. But again, not having been through it, I'd have to look into the mechanics a little bit more and get back to you, but that'd be my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got the CEO going to chime in here. Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I think just to dovetail on Director Bruder's comment. Typically, for an MZO, at least historically, a council resolution and council support is often sought. Now, you're seeing, I think, a lot more with this government, the potentiality that a council decision may be overturned by senior levels of government. In some particular cases, we haven't seen any come forward, but there are definitely those that I'm hearing are under review in certain municipalities where an MZO really does supersede. We are creatures of the province, and so the province does supersede any of those particular decisions. I think until some of these things are tested, until some of these things come forward, we're not going to know. But typically, MZOs, as I've dealt with them in the past, were really things that council initially had supported and council had passed resolutions for. But I think we're living in a bit of a different time, and time will tell what that looks like moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. And I would ask that we try to keep our questions specifically to the delegated authority update report LS-15-22. I understand we could look at all kinds of hypothetical questions and scenarios, but I would ask that we try to keep it to the specific report that we're being asked to look at tonight. I understand this is something new, and so I'm allowing that latitude, but Counselor Mickelik, are you...?
I asked the question only because...
For clarification purposes.
For clarification purposes.
Absolutely.
And before we allow this delegated authority and not, you know...
That's why I allowed it. I understood it was for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Rangima?
My mic's on. Thank you, Chair Brunet. Just wanted to, something I found a little bit confusing, maybe a clarification in this report that, so on page four at the top and the bottom, it says that council is not authorized to delegate any of the following powers and duties, and it says zoning bylaws. So to me, one of the things that we will be delegating authority for is the adoption of agricultural purposes-only zoning bylaw. I think when you say zoning bylaw, what you mean is comprehensive zoning bylaw, so that might be to change the wording, and that might be a little more clear to people. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Pachariva. The council receive and file as information report LS-15-22, the delegated authority update, and that council approve and pass a delegated authority bylaw and rescind delegation of powers and duties policy CS-2007-02. And I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote's now open. And that is being closed, and that carries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. We are now at Agenda Item Nine, Confidential Items. And we will now consider Agenda Items 9.1 and 9.2, motion to consider confidential items. Before I read the motion and we move into closed, I would like to explain what will happen for those watching this meeting online. First, there will be a closed session statement that the deputy clerk will go through for staff that will be attending the closed session remotely. Once that is completed, we will move on with the motion to move into closed. The deputy clerk will be turning off the live webcast during the closed portion of the meeting. Once we have completed the closed portion of the meeting, we will then resume with the live webcast and carry on with the public portion of the meeting, and we'll read the motions in public session. So I will now ask the deputy clerk to conduct the closed session statement for all of council and others attending the closed session remotely.
Thank you. All members are reminded that discussions in closed sessions are to remain confidential as per our procedural bylaw and code of conduct for the council of the Town of Lincoln. Before we begin, I need each member that is attending electronically to confirm the following, that you understand that matters are to remain confidential, and confirm no one else is present with you, and confirm no one else can hear this closed session, and confirm that you are not using any electronic devices other than your tablet, computer, telephone for video conferencing, and confirm that you are not recording this portion of the meeting. If you acknowledge all of the above, please reply with "I understand" and confirm to all of the statements as I read your name aloud. First, Human Resource Specialist Jacqueline Buchanan.
I confirm and understand all of the above.
Thank you. And Director of Finance Administration and Innovation Lawrence Wagner.
I understand and confirm to all these statements.
Thank you. Director of Planning and Development Matt Bruder.
I understand and confirm to all of the statements.
Fire Chief Greg Hudson.
I understand and confirm to all the statements.
Thank you. Marion Love, Principal Consultant, ML Consulting.
I understand and confirm to all statements.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by Counselor Reimer. Under Section 239 of the Municipal Act, notice is hereby given that council adjourn to closed session in order to address Item 9.1 and 9.2 as follows. Item 9.1 pursuant to Section 239-2C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, and pursuant to Section 239-2B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Sorry, I had the wrong screen up. One moment. Thank you. That's open for voting now. And that closes. Thank you, Chair.
So now.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Counselor Mikulak that council resume in open session. And I will now ask your deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you Chair, that vote is now open. Thank you, that's now closed and that carries. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by Counselor Timmers that council declare the following lay-ins as surplus to the needs of the municipality. A 4195 Fly Road described as Lot 24 Plan M13 in the former township of Clinton, Town of Lincoln, Regional Municipality of Niagara. And B 4238 Fly Road in Camden, part of Lot 47 Plan M13 in the former Township of Clinton, Town of Lincoln, Regional Municipality of Niagara, and shown as Part II on reference Plan Number 30R-15087. And that council approve the sale of 4195 Fly Road and 4238 Fly Road subject to the following conditions. A, the purchases of each parcel entering into an agreement of purchase and sale to the satisfaction of the town's legal council. The mayor and clerk be authorized to sign all documentation to facilitate the respective sales. And that council adopt bylaws to authorize the sale and conveyances and that council direct that the proceeds of the sale be allocated to the Infrastructure Reserve Fund. And I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you Chair, that vote's now open. And that vote is closed and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Devan. I now have a motion moved by Counselor Pachariva. That council receive and file report AD-16-22 Organizational Job Attraction, Retention, Performance and Compensation Review Update. And that the organizational job attraction, retention, performance and compensation review update presentation as presented by Mary Ann Love be received and that staff proceed with the implementation of the administrative items inclusive of the new job description, descriptions, 60th percentile target, proposed grid, pay equity analysis and performance assessment. And that any costs associated with the new compensation model be part of the 2023 budget process. And I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you Chair, that vote's now open. And that vote is now closed and that carries. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. So we are now at committee remarks. Do we have any committee remarks from anyone around the horseshoe? Seeing none, there being no further business, I now call this meeting adjourned at 8:44 PM. Good evening.
Thank you, good night everyone electronically.